We're gonna call to order. Give me some mics there, there we go. We're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, June the 8th, 2021. If you would, please do me a favor and take a moment. I will do the same and check your cellphone and make sure it's on silent. It's never good to interrupt the meeting with a cellphone. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Clodie.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna begin, as always, with our invocation and pledge. If you care to join in standing for the invocation, then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Police Department Chaplain Lauren Berry will lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. Let us take a moment to pause and reflect. Oh, Holy One, we do pause for a moment to be grateful for the gift of another day, for the blessings that you have shared with us and the opportunities we've been given to be a blessing to others. We especially ask your blessing tonight upon the newest members of the New Smyrna Beach Fire Department. Bless their families, keep them in your care, and guide their steps. We need your guidance, wisdom, and support as we continue making important decisions that impact our community. So we ask your blessings upon our mayor and city commissioners, that they may use their best skills, resources, and judgment with regard to matters placed before them tonight. Give direction and understanding to all who are placed in positions of leadership in our community. Provide protection for them and all who serve our community faithfully, day and night, to protect the well-being of all of our citizens and those who visit our community. Help us all as leaders tonight and as citizens of New Smyrna Beach to engage in healthy discussions tonight, to respect our differences, to validate the worth of every life represented here, and to strive for unity throughout our community as we work together for the common good of all. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of unity and charity. In all the holy names of God, we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Call it. Any changes on the agenda tonight?
No changes, sir.
All right. Where's Fire Chief? We have some, a penning ceremony for a few folks. I think eight, did you say? Eight folks?
Seven.
Seven. I think we have some catch-up from COVID, so.
We do. Well, this'll be a, this'll be a unique experience, though. The commission over the last two years has had the foresight to kind of fill the gap in public safety on the fire service side and has authorized the hiring of several people to allow us to adequately staff the apparatus at the minimum standard for public safety for fire service and EMS within New Smyrna Beach. So we brought, we brought these new folks on board and at the very same time got struck with COVID. That shouldn't really mean a whole lot, other than our tradition of applying a badge, having a family member come and put a badge on the member was pushed aside because everything went to Zoom. So the opportunity for us to do this kind of went away for a year and a half. So I'm gonna bring up four of the newest seven, seven members of the Fire Department, two of which started, come on up, guys, and gals, two which started about two months ago, and then the other ones are the catch-up from COVID-19 Zoom meetings. I'm gonna bring them up and I'll introduce them as they get up here. The first gentleman in line is Eric Pachario. He's a US Marine and now one of our newest, about two months on, been a great addition. Laura Herrera, another two month, and then we have Chase Pearson, Dylan Curtis, Ellie Tomei, Brandon Carroll, and Daniel Morales. Those are the five catch-ups from the last year and a half of COVID. We appreciate the opportunity for the commission to recognize them, for the public to recognize them, and for me to be able to share with the family how important they are to us. The fire service, we tend to take people away from their families on a 24-hour shift every third day, and that means Christmas and Thanksgiving and all those other important holidays, baseball games and soccer games. And this is as much of an opportunity for me to recognize the family that's sacrificing, giving me their family members to serve the community, as well as for the family members to come up and recognize them and to apply the badge of the New Smyrna Beach Fire Department. So if we can bring up the family, the appropriate penning people, come on up, guys. Can we get y'all like together somehow? And this is a tradition of basically, whereas in the police, the police service, they do a swearing-in. This is very similar to that. We don't do a swearing-in, but we do do a badge assignment to each member, usually by a family member or mentor in this case. So I'm gonna have you do it all at the same time, basically, if y'all wanna come up and... No. All right, don't go away yet. And I'm gonna ask if the commission, the electeds can come on up and, and have a photo with the members and their families, and then we'll do just the members of the Fire Department, if you don't mind. And it's gonna be a big picture. Now you get a paycheck.
All right. Certainly, on behalf of the commission and all of the residents present, we're thankful to all of our first responders that are here with us, and, as Chief said, their families. So again, thank you all. All right, we're gonna try to press on, so, hey, Chief, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going, so if everybody can kinda, yeah, no, that's the problem. There you go. Yeah, go for it. All right, we'll give them one more minute to clear out. So the next item up is public participation. This is your chance to speak to the commission for three minutes on any item you would like. My ask is, address your comments to the commission, and if you are here for anything under second readings and public hearings, you can speak to those at that time. You don't have to speak now. But if anything else on the agenda, this would be your chance to speak to that. So if you'd come forward, give your name and address when you speak, please. Anyone here for public participation? After all that, there you go. All right, we got one. Come on up. If you'd like to speak after this gentleman, you can come right down here to the front to save some time. If not, we're gonna move right along. Yes, sir.
Didn't want to leave you lonely. My name is Dan Moran. I live at, I live in New Smyrna. We have a house at 1215 Turnbull Street. We've been here in New Smyrna now. My wife's family here about 60 years and last about three years. Love it. I'm here to talk about the dog park that was installed on Turnbull Street, and let me first say, I love dog parks. I always tell my wife I like dogs, but I don't like people. And I think it's a great thing to have. However, this dog park has got its, its issues. It was cited in a park, which has been there, I guess, for years. I'm not exactly sure. And it was put in without any, from what I understand, any resident input at all, number one. Number two, there didn't seem to be any proceedings before this was done. And number three, and probably most important, it was cited in this park, literally 10 feet from one of our, who can't be here tonight, one of our neighbor's homes on his property line. And all he hears all day long and into the night, unfortunately, since it's not secured, is dogs barking and barking and barking. Our house is about 70 feet away. It's the same thing. Again, not saying anything wrong, I love them. They're great. However, there's some, there's definitely some frailties in, in this design. I, when I moved here before that time, from, I moved from the north, like, like nobody else does, and I worked on developing a dog park in a town, the town of Brunswick, and we had to adhere to all the regulations. I have to tell you, trying to find regulations in Florida for dog parks is not easy. There's a lot of recommendations, but in terms of regulations, there's not many. A few counties, Hillsborough County, I believe, has those. Probably the number one recommendation, recommendation or regulation that is enforced in many communities, there has to be a 200-foot buffer between properties, homeowner properties, and the dog park, number one. Number two, they should not be located in a residential area. Obviously, you can figure out why, because of the noise. That's a huge problem. And, you know, my neighbor who couldn't be here, literally, he, I've been over there during the day, no deceit, and it's unbelievable, the noise he puts up with, and it's constant. The park is supposed to be open, I believe, at seven o'clock at night. There is no security. There is no lock. People are in there all night long. It's a great place to have a party, I guess. And, you know, and people, we pick up every now and then, and we have to. And obviously, as we can well imagine, it isn't just alcohol, it's drugs that are used in that area. So what, what I'm here to, to ask the, the City Commission to look at is, number one, the process of what was used to put that park in that location. Number two, the regulations. Number three, what can we done to mitigate this challenge? It's a real nasty challenge. And I'm not even talking about, you know, cleanup. And the town, I know, has been trying to clean it up.
Yeah, sorry.
And I just ran out of time.
Yeah, okay.
May I just like to briefly comment?
Sure.
Appreciate you coming in. I know you, and I think the neighbor who lives next, lives next door to the park.
Roger.
Will be, have reached out. I have been delayed at reaching back out due to a number of issues, including the homeless one. So you guys are front and center on my list to get to, and we'll go ahead and I'll be your, I'll be the person who reaches out and helps facilitate and deal with a lot of the issues you have.
Deal, Jason. Thank you.
We can work on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no others, the last thing I'd say to the gentleman as we move forward is, you know, not, certainly hate that we're in this spot and look forward to hearing Commissioner McGurk's working with you all on it. But that went through numerous, you know, we always hear that, we've talked about this before, that we always get, hey, this came out of nowhere. And it's like, well, we talked about it at least four or five different meetings that this was discussed. So we're gonna continue to try to figure out ways to better get that information pushed out. I wish I had everyone's email address and phone number that I could quickly, by area, send a mass alert, you know, but we don't have that yet, so. All right, seeing no others for public participation, we're gonna close public participation. The next item is consent agenda. We have eight items on that. Do you have any that would wish to pull an item? We'll begin with Commissioner Clodie.
Nothing tonight.
No pulls. Vice Mayor Sacks?
Nothing to pull.
Commissioner McGurk? Commissioner Hartman?
Nothing.
I also have nothing to pull. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion to approve is presented, and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Yes.
Commissioner Clodie.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda is approved, including all eight items. Item 7A, consider request for code enforcement lien amnesty at 313 Dimmock Street. We have, Barbara is here on that one. We're gonna, so how are we gonna do it? We'll first hear from the city, and then we're gonna hear from the applicant, and then we're gonna have questions and comments. So, yes, Barbara?
Good evening. So this property is located at 313 Dimmock Street, and Mr. Gurr has submitted, as you all know, he's here for a lien amnesty, looking for the city to help him, I guess, possibly reduce it. I really don't know. I do know that he does own some neighboring properties, and he's kind of looking to help use this property to develop the old church on Washington Street. The city does have a lien that's been filed against the previous property owner for the demolition of a structure and for nuisance that the city abated on in January 2015 and August of 2016. The total amount of the liens is $7,564.10. As code enforcement staff, I would not recommend that this be reduced, just simply because of all the work that does go into getting, keeping the properties into compliance and having to go down, go around, check to make sure they are in compliance, putting liens and taking them to boards and everything. I would just, I just don't support that the lien be reduced.
Okay. I think probably prudent, we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open up for the commission to ask any questions or make any comments. So if the applicant would like to speak at this time?
I'm John Gurr. I bought the property in 2018 and was completely unaware as that there was any liens on the property. And I believe the owner that owned it before me was a Miss Lamboy, and she had bought it at auction.
Pull that mic up if you want, so they can.
And, and so I'm just not aware that there was any of these issues with the property prior to purchasing it. So I just, you know, I'd love to figure out how we can figure out some reasonable solution to this.
Okay. You bought it in 2018, you said?
Correct.
Okay. Does that jive with your records, or do you pull that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
2018, you show the property was purchased by the current owner in 2018?
Yes, it was purchased in 2018, and the liens were attached to the property at the time that he purchased the property. They were filed against the previous property owner.
Okay. All right. Both of you will hang out. We'll have commission comments. If they have questions for you, they'll direct it to you. Otherwise, just hang out there. Comments, discussion by the commission? Questions? Commissioner Clodie?
Well, during a normal purchase, you, you have an attorney, and they do due diligence, and they find whatever liens are around. It's very common. If you purchase other properties in the area, I'm sure you know of that procedure. I'm just surprised you can buy it and not know that the liens are there. That's a, I'm not, I'm not asking for an answer. We work very hard, code enforcement does. These things are posted, they're legally available to look at for anybody, whether it be me, you, or whomever. You may have good intentions about helping the neighborhood out, which I'm not even gonna question. However, the city has been carrying these costs for quite a while, and I believe that we're due every penny that we're asking for. I have, in the past, when these situations come up, been willing to reduce the lien somewhat to, in this case, perhaps $6,000, provide it be paid within 24 calendar days. No exceptions. If not, it just goes through. So that would be my position.
Okay, go ahead.
Barbara, this was a demolition. Was it, did I understand correctly that this was a property that was demoed?
Yes, the structures on the property were demoed, and we also went in with the nuisance abatement contractor and cleaned the properties a few times.
So to the applicant, I certainly understand and sympathize with your issue. However, the problem the city has had is, I was on the commission when we had to adopt these programs. There are a lot of properties that were unkept. So essentially, the taxpayer has bear the burden of these properties being unkept. I can, in good faith, reduce the lien amount. I am interested, I am willing to discuss reduction in the interest, but the amount that has accumulated due to the cost and the time that has put in by staff, I, I don't think I can reduce that much. So that's where I'm at with this.
Okay.
I'm, I'm willing to go the full amount, or I'm willing to talk about some of the interest.
So I've heard 6,000, no motions yet. I'm just trying to see where everybody's at, so I know, we can hope for a successful motion. So I heard 6,000. Just the, so it sounds like about 5,000 would be the lien amount, round numbers, about 49, 42 is what I'm reading here. So about 5,000 would be if we knocked off all interest. Yeah, I could support any of the three, honestly. I, I agree with everything Commissioner McGurk just said. I wouldn't go below the lien. I wouldn't favor anything, a reduction of the lien. I could see waiving interest or even just a partial wave of interest as Commissioner Clodie, so.
Question for the applicant.
Sure.
What is your plans for the property?
Yeah.
Talking to the mic, please.
Well, the ultimate plans are to help revitalize the area and the church itself. And the reason we acquired the land around it was to maintain like the continuity on the property, and we're hopefully raising some money and some funds to provide essentially improvements to the area, residential, business, property development, so.
Raising, raising money or funds? What does that, I mean, is this, is this a private, is this a private deal, or is this some kind of 501(c)(3)?
No, right now, it's purely private. My wife and I are.
Okay, so it's a private for-profit project?
Potentially, right now, yes, but we're in the process of just analyzing everything. So we haven't formalized any plans. We have discussed with city planning some of the vision and ideas for it, but right now, it's just in an idea stage of what we'd love to see happen there. And the reason we bought the land behind it, which was just land, was, was to, again, maintain some integrity on the, on the, basically, the perimeter of the property.
What's the timeframe that you would hope to get something, pull building permits by, or get, start getting a project done on this?
We've been looking at probably in the next five years.
Okay.
But the church itself is that we, we have some issues with the buildings. It's an old historical building of revitalization and the costs and all that, of what it would allow us to do to open it up for, for rent for the community.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
So when did you first find out about the liens, that the liens were on the property?
Like a month ago.
Okay.
It was the first notice we've had, and I bought it in 2018.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why we're here. I'm a bit of a surprise to get this.
Okay.
All right, to have a motion, with no other questions, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We give a partial reduction in the amount of interest charge to a total payment in the amount of $6,000, and to, on the condition that that amount of money is paid within the next 14 calendar days. If not, we go back to the original lien amount.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. To be clear for the, for the commission, the motion is for, to approve the lien amnesty request and the amount of a reduction of $1,564. So it'd be a $6,000 payment that would be due within 14 calendar days. If not, it would revert back to the original amount owed, and interest would continue to accrue. I assume interest would pause during that 14-day period. So that's the motion. So a yes vote is accepting that, the $6,000 amount, and no vote, the applicant would owe the full amount as it is right now. Any questions on the motion? Yes vote is 6,000. No vote, it would fail, and that would be a denial of the lien amnesty. And we could try again, or the applicant would owe the full amount. City Clerk, call the roll.
I'm clarifying, the interest is paused during the 14 days, correct, and then takes back up.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't clarify that last time. I assume that's, that would be how we'd do it. I mean.
Yes, it's my understanding, the 6,000 is the amount now, and if it's not paid within that, that, 6,000's the amount.
Right.
If it's not paid within the 14 days, interest picks up from right now.
Right, okay.
Okay.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Clodie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item approved, so the 6,000 is payable in 14 days. And you can see, Barbara can probably help you out with that, or if you have any other questions, talk to Barbara. All right, next item up, 7B, pole signs. Brian?
Yes, we have one exhibit and a brief overview of this item for discussion tonight. A pole sign is, quite simply, the sign is mounted on a pole. More precisely, it's where there is not a continuous form from the ground to the top of the sign. And I've got some pictures here around town of some pole signs. Pole signs are currently prohibited for new signs. The reason for this item is ordinance 108-11, which was adopted in 2011, requires all existing pole signs in the city to be removed by November 29th, 2021. Based on staff's recent count, there are 173 existing pole signs citywide that would be in violation if not removed.
Real quick question. The Home Depot owners.
Yeah.
Example of a monument, though, right?
Exactly. I was gonna get to that in a second, so, yeah, these are all pole signs around town, and what is permitted now is a ground or monument sign, which you see here in the lower right. All of these other pole signs are in, would be in violation and would currently be required to be removed by November 29th. So, yes, that is one example of what you can do today. Over the past nine and a half years, based on staff's review, very few pole sign owners have voluntarily removed their pole signs based on this ordinance. There have been replacements done in some cases, but these are mainly due to either repairs, storm damage, or redevelopment of a site. Very few instances where somebody came in, knew of this ordinance, and said, I'm trying to get ahead of it, I'm going to replace my pole sign. So the discussion tonight is to seek the commission's direction regarding the upcoming deadline and give consideration to an extension of the deadline or taking other action. Staff is recommending a four-year extension, which could also include conditions that would perhaps accelerate the removal of some existing pole signs before the four-year extension. These conditions could include, and this is just for discussion, for example, after two years, you could say that no more face changes or other cosmetic changes are allowed, only minor structural changes or repairs. After three years, you could require pole sign removal for a change of use, activation of a terminated, terminated use, change of tenant or change of ownership. And then after four years, all pole signs would be removed. So, for example, let's say, take the CVS sign. If somebody, if Walgreens bought that building, they could change that out now to a Walgreens and would be required, they would be allowed to use that existing pole sign. So you could tighten those rules up to perhaps accelerate some changes or, or take further action. So you could tighten those rules up to perhaps accelerate some changes or, or take further action. With that, be glad to take any questions.
Okay. One question, and I'll open it up for discussion, just for clarity, and you and I touched on this briefly. But I assume some signs are protected, I mean, I'm even seeing a few up here that I would, I would consider more local landmarks than signage. And I don't know who determines that, or how that's determined, but is that, that's already factored in? And what, how does that play into this, I guess?
So we have a provision for vintage signs. They get submitted and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. We did have one last year that applied for that, but that would be the path. There's some rules, has to be in existence for, I believe, 30 years minimum.
Okay. I mean, I'm looking at like the Blackbeard sign, like it's been here my whole life. I don't know if it's vintage or not.
Could be eligible. We'd have to look into that.
Okay, but that's determined by HPC?
We have criteria, and then they approve it. It gets submitted for their approval.
If they meet the criteria, they approve, okay. All right, that's my only question for now, and then I'll open it up. Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, vintage signs, I'm glad you brought that up. That's one of the issues that I did want to discuss. You know, I'm in a unique position where I own a business that has a pole sign. And as, as Brian said, that there are, that there's a provision for vintage signs. I spoke to staff years ago on it. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna apply for it. The irony is, because I have a business and I'm on the commission, if I did not want to, have not applied for it yet, because I did not want to create a situation where there was a law, which I was not part of enacting, but I did not want to create a situation where I had a, I applied, got the vintage sign and meet the criteria for it, and somehow I have protected myself, everybody else has to then go ahead and conform with this, with very few people having the ability to apply for the vintage sign ordinance. So there's also the idea that whether or not I have a conflict of interest. So, you know, I've been kind of stuck in the middle on this, and I want to clarify with the city attorney, I do not have a conflict of interest, although we're not voting on it tonight. When, and if we do vote on this, I don't have a conflict of interest, and I'll let the city attorney explain that.
Yes, as Commissioner McGurk stated, so tonight is a non-voting item. But there is in Chapter 112 where a commissioner can't, uh, vote on an item that inures to your special private gain or loss. And so the question becomes, well, what is special private gain or loss? And so the Commission on Ethics, they have opinions where they have to go through and decide, yes here, no here. And what they look at is the size of the class affected. And so, once you get into the 1% to 2%, that's when they start saying, all right, there's a conflict of interest. So, you know, on one extreme, like if the commission votes to reduce taxes, well, that benefits everybody, including the five up here. But if it's one commissioner and one business, that would apply, that would be to their special private gain or loss. Here, we're talking about 173 signs. So when you do the math of one business out of 173, it comes out to .0056, I believe. So it's not in the 1% to 2% threshold. So it was my opinion, this, the size of the class is large, so he does not have a conflict. I also confirmed with the Commission on Ethics today and called them, and they confirmed that the analysis was correct on looking at the size of class affected.
Yeah, and it's very similar when a commissioner gets a street paved. How many people are affected on the street? In other words, there's no conflict of interest, not that the commissioner can't ever get his street paved. So, um, so I just want to give a, so my thoughts on this pole sign issue. I don't have some, I don't have anything against pole signs. In my case, it's part of the historic aspect of the highway culture, pole signs, how they were created. I, and Mayor, I'm glad you brought up Blackbeards, because that was the example I wanted to give. Really cool sign, great sign, put a lot of care into it, and I would hate to think that they have to take that down. And you look at these other signs that are just rotting away for decades, rusting out. And I would like to think that that could be a code enforcement issue as opposed to simply banning pole signs. You look at the CVS, that's a pretty, it's a pretty ugly sign. It doesn't have any special architecture aesthetics to it. But on the other hand, I will say that the debate on the monument signs is, we don't really have, we're not seeing any real aesthetics on those either. So a lot of it is just the sign, you know, the Home Depot sign, the vast majority of the square footage is used by their sign. There's no real, any, no real design, no interesting design on it. So, you know, I hate that people like Blackbeards would get penalized because CVS or some old shop on US 1 or on A, on, on Third Avenue has decided not to keep their pole signs looking good. So, you know, with that said, I do want to be open and let everybody know I will apply for the vintage sign ordinance. But I also would hope that we can, at the very least, extend out at least four years. And another reason why is I have been contacted by a lot of businesses that have spent tens of thousands of dollars in their signs. They've bought property and then found out about this later. So I don't want to bring up other issues in the city, but it is not common where you buy a property or you go in to apply for a business and that nice printed-out sheet of everything you're going to need to do is in front of you. So it does come up, and a lot of, and the staff has been good for the past few years now, especially during the hurricanes, and to, to make people aware of it and then try to drive them into getting the, you know, up to code on that. So of course, well, I want to acknowledge that if we decided to not have pole signs, that is, that's now also a problem, because we have been steering people to get, to change out their pole signs due to this time coming up of the 10 years. So I don't have a good solution, other than I would hope that we can extend this. This is the, this is, the discussion tonight is about whether we extend it and give people more time. I would ask that not, I think it's better if there's a change of use than they have to change. Change of ownership, you buy a piece of property, commercial property, you know, due diligence, yes. As Commissioner Colodey explained during this code enforcement issue, you have a title company or an attorney, do a check on the property, you see what comes back as liens. Having an ordinance like this that would cost people thousands of dollars, that is not your typical due diligence that you would expect to do on the property. So a change of use at a business, I think, could trigger that. A sale of the property, I'm not so sure. So I hope I clarify, I support deferring for another four years as staff recommends, and I would use the change of use to also trigger, amongst other things, but not a purchase of the property or sale of the property.
You bring up an interesting point, that just going away from this entirely, I don't think is viable, because then folks like Home Depot that were held to, you know, they were told, you can't have this, and eventually, everyone's going to be in the same boat, because there's a marketing difference between the CVS sign and the Home Depot sign. I mean, maybe, I don't know, but there's a, there's a reason you have those kind of signs, so.
So the irony is, that's from a totally different bygone era. And which, which is exactly why my business would have that vintage sign ordinance. It fits with the whole concept of the business.
Right.
We drive around, we have our phones now, we have maps, we have ways. Life has changed so much. The idea of the big tall pole sign is relatively archaic. And I would argue, it's not necessary, even from a business perspective.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Other comments on this item? I saw him, I heard you. I'll go to him, then I'll come to you. Go ahead.
Brian, would they currently have the permitting fees to remove a sign under our current situation?
Currently, it would be waived.
Okay. My only concern with, with doing it with the change of use is you get someone who's starting a new business, trying to get everything else in. You know, I think of Time Ango, all of the problems they had getting going and, and costs, trying to get started, that if we make it, do it at a change of business, I would rather see it, like maybe a, give them a six-month or 12-month window to do that for a change of use. Or certainly, if, if they sold the property, then I would think the seller would have to, I mean, that would be up to them. I just, I would hate to see a new business or a startup try to come in, rent a building or buy a building, and then have this additional cost along with everything else, along with the startup. So I think that there should be some consideration there, but I certainly agree that, I'm not opposed to the extending of it, but I think, I think that certainly with some of these conditions, then it should be a part of that, you know, whether it's a change of use or a sell, then they should have a window within a certain time period, which may be shorten that window down. And like you said, give some incentives, maybe for people who, who would want to do it now. Maybe if it's part of a remodeling or something, if they threw that in, you know, there, there was, be some kind of an incentive program going on that we could do. So I was surprised that there were this many of them still out there nine years later, but.
It's expensive.
I, I know, so.
Did you have a comment, or do you want to go to the Vice Mayor?
No, just what about the six months delay, so what happened if the, after the six months, they did not install the new signs? What are we going to do then?
We'll do code enforcement, and then there'll come for lien amnesty, and then we'll. It always comes back to our. Yeah, right.
It becomes, it becomes a, whether you do it, I mean, I understand why you're thinking about it. But if they don't do it, now it becomes that I have a business and they're going to shut me down. So it becomes another issue.
Yeah, I know.
All right, let's see what the rest of the commission thinks. Vice Mayor?
So a question for Brian. Is my assumption correct that back in 2011, it was the city's wish to get rid of pole signs because they were visually deleterious to the view?
Yes.
And they were given 10 years. I, I find it unusual, maybe an ordinate amount of time considering the expense. But it seems like a lot of businesses did not go along with the idea. And I'm concerned that if we didn't see much turnover in 10 years, are we going to see it after we give them another four years? I do understand the hardship from COVID may have affected some businesses. We, we have, Commissioner McGurk's sign is a grand old sign. Hopefully, it's 30 years old, and I think that's the age. And I noticed another sign, Southern Paint has the old paint can sitting on a pole.
They have, it's a sign.
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, it went to them.
Right, good, so. There are, you know, were these signs, and then there are frames and shelves of rusted-out heaps that we'd certainly like to get rid of. I don't see much change in four years. I could, I could grant the one-year COVID. I wouldn't be comfortable about it, but, because I, I can't see people, you know, after 10 years, if you haven't done anything, it's, again, it's the four additional. I understand the motive, but is it really going to work?
Yes, I, I wasn't here when this first ordinance was passed, so I don't have any idea as to why they did it. The historical aspect is very important, yet really, is it that important? Is a pole sign a blight? Is it a safety hazard? Is it really a problem? To, I like monument signs, I think they're great. But you have a lot of properties, especially along Route 1, where because of site distance issues, pulling in and out of driveways, you really don't want to have a monument sign there, because it's a safety issue. So maybe you don't need a 24-foot-high sign. But one that's underneath, that's higher than your vision going into a driveway is important. So you have to have that. I'm opposed to just telling everybody they have to get rid of them. If they're in poor condition, code enforcement can have them taken down. That, that's an issue that can be taken care of. You take the CVS sign. I don't think it is, but it's pretty darn close to the safe triangle distance. That must be kept clear, especially at a, at a place with a heavy volume of traffic. I'm in favor of the four months, or, excuse me, four years, to put off the inevitable. But I'm also heavily in favor of having our development staff take a look at regulations that are more fair and reasonable in the light of planning and zoning, as well as the rights of the people who have the signs. Not just approach it from, we have an ordinance that says you have to take them down, but let's come up with some realistic regulations on it. That would be my position. So I do support the four years, but really, it goes beyond just the fact that it's a pole sign. Thank you.
Brian, do you know, I mean, I don't, I certainly wasn't in this seat 10 years ago, but I know from a, this is a fairly common thing. I know in Ormond, I worked at a business that had a pole sign, and I was there literally after Hurricane blew through. Our first task was to go and make sure that if that sign was down, that we, and it was slightly bent, and we were literally out there like jacking it back up before the city drove through, because they were so worried about losing their grandfather pole sign. So I know this is a very common thing, to Commissioner Colodey's point, but what is the, from a design, planning standpoint, can you speak to that now, or what is the?
The standard now is definitely to ground monument signs, with pole signs have been phased out, so.
So outside of like highway interchanges, nobody, no, no cities are really allowing pole signs as a new construction standard?
No, modern sign ordinances do not allow like the CVS signs. I mean, you have some very creative ones here, like the Blackbeards and others, that have some very unique aspects, but many of them, like these ones on the lower left, you know, or this, this E-Sig one, are just really poorly done, kind of, kind of an eyesore. So you've, you've got a mixture, but the ordinances are designed to prevent that type of sign.
Okay. So I tried, I always try to keep track of where everybody's at and figure out where, where the ground is. I heard one commissioner or vice mayor wasn't in favor of probably hardly any extension. Heard a couple that were in favor of some kind of an extension. You know, I, I'm probably somewhere between all that, in that I agree with Commissioner Colodey. I don't want to just lay on this regulation for regulation's sake. Like, I don't know that it's an important enough issue that we accelerate it and lay this expense, especially coming out of COVID. I mean, if we hadn't, if we were still just on this, you know, role economically, it may be different. But coming out of COVID, I don't see laying this as a business expense over the next, you know, between now and November. I mean, the sign shops would love us. They'd have the best year ever, but everybody else would hate us. So I, I see giving time, and I, and I think maybe, maybe we sustain the course of just tightening down the, the triggers of when they have to be changed. There's probably more of a chance to do that, tighten that down a bit. And then maybe, you know, over time, this resolves itself. In that, you know, hurricanes will eventually knock signs down, they will rust away. And, you know, as long as we don't allow them to go back up and capture a few other change of use, change of this, you know, enough of those kind of things. So I, yeah, I'm, I tend to say, yeah, let's grant some kind of extension and then give some parameters around change of use. It's got to be removed, and, and I don't even know about giving the extra time, because to me, then that becomes, to Kyle's point, like what do you, you have no, you have no carrot or stick at that point. You're kind of without options. So I would say, if it's change of use, it's, you know, you don't get the permit or something like that until this has been done, if we're going to go that route, so.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. Can CRA funds be used for signs for a serious business owner that's planning on staying?
The CRA funds, as far as I know, it's for facade and site improvement. Now, if you consider the sign as a site improvement, I guess it would be considered as eligible. But I think that's a question that we have to investigate for. I mean, those signs, by the way, they're not cheap. I remember there was a business on Saxon and Third Avenue that they put the sign, they encroached into the right of way, and it was probably between 17 to $20,000. So it's, they're not, they're not cheap.
And when you get into the electronic ones, you're upwards of 50 to 70, so. It's a significant cost. And again, CVS, different story.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a penny to, but small business, it's brutal. It could kill the deal. It could, it makes something from, you insert, you know, you squeeze out into profitability at some point to not. You know, the ratios, the banks don't, won't lend, it's.
I wish I was a fly on the wall in 2011, and when the city decided to get rid of the pole sign, knowing even back then, it was a $5,000 proposition, how we all came to this, 10 years down the line. it was a $5,000 proposition, how we all came to this 10 years down the line. We only had a few comply. It was obviously the cost, I think. It would contribute, you're asking a lot of the businessmen, but to change the signs to pedestal on Dixie Highway would really improve the look, which we're trying to do, I don't know, hopefully it would improve business. I could go for, I don't know if we have a motion or not, but I could go for a year's grace period because of COVID.
So tonight, we're talking, we're really just, well, actually, my script is asked for a motion, but we're really just giving staff some direction and bring us back something, right?
Correct.
So we're just trying to give staff enough so they can get a consensus, so they can bring it back and know that they at least have three people that are going to support some version of what they bring back. So that's all we're really doing, so. Commissioner Clody?
Yeah, I think we should separate the revising of the standards from the actual extension. The extension of time at this point applies to the ordinance that we currently have and would give our staff some breathing room to look at the entire issue. There are a lot of standards for pole signs. There are the height that they're at, and most of them are tied into speed limits on the roadway to provide proper visibility. So I think those two issues should be separated, and I would like to give them the chance to come up with revised standards.
So what you're saying is approve the extension and then have them come back to us with some time on if we want to do any other changes to, like after two years required change of use, you're saying that kind of stuff come back to us?
Correct. And whether there are appropriate places for them or not. So that's what I would like to look at.
Yeah. And I, that feels like a Pandora's box I don't know that I want to get into because it feels like we've crossed that bridge a long time ago and we've kind of gotten to modern design standards on pole signs and whether or not they should fit into anywhere, with the exception of the vintage ones. So I don't know that I want to go all the way back to cracking into, you know, do we want to open that back up? I feel like we've had a standard that's been working for all new construction. Let's just figure out how we deal with the grandfather status at this point. That's just my thoughts on that.
I disagree with that. I think we should look at it, but that's...
I think we'd be going against modern trends and modern, and what we've long established, so. But if you have others that agree, we can bring that back.
I don't disagree with not necessarily having to put everything out at once. I don't disagree with Commissioner Clody's idea, at least. Let's just, we can deal with the, time extension's easy. That's just an extension on time. And if we want to get into any more of the details, we can do that. And I get, what I'm hearing Commissioner Clody say, correct me if I'm wrong, is we even haven't even decided what we would want to task them yet with, if anything, more than what they've already brought up. But one doesn't have to be done with the other. In other words, we do one, and then that staff doesn't have to come back to us and feel rushed on any further recommendations on the issue. So that's kind of what I'm hearing, and I understand there's a no-win on this, especially if we try to go backwards. And that's what I hear you say. And, you know, for the, let's just, I don't know the numbers, half the people who've already been made to transition to a monument sign are going to feel very upset about if we decide it at a later date. But that is also, as you go through an issue and you learn more. I mean, I hate, I will hate when Blackbeards has to take that sign down. They have put a lot of thought and design into that sign because it's a, but it gets taken down in four years because of pole sign. Although the CVS and of course, the E-SIG sign is, are great examples of why we go to that regulation. But anyway, I could support staff simply coming back with a recommendation for a time of four years or whatever it is, and then we can deal with some other issues later if they would, if they would want. You know, I don't, I see the point Commissioner Clody was making, so I can also support that.
I see it too. I think what he was saying is trying to change it where, you know, perhaps there's an alley. So right now, if I want, if I built a new building on a lot, pole sign is not an option. Like, literally, there's no avenue to get there. And what I hear Commissioner Clody saying, that's what words in his mouth is, perhaps it should be. And I'm saying, I don't want to go there. I don't want to open some box where all of a sudden now Home Depot is coming out and saying, oh, we, let's build a pole sign because now we qualify based on these new things who open up. I don't want to see us open that up.
I agree with, I agree with you on that, although, you know, I also, for new construction. But I also wouldn't mind having, taking a look at not having to require Blackbeards to take a very well-designed aesthetically pleasing sign down.
And, and so that's, that's different to me than opening back up for, you know, from this point forward. That's back to how do we handle all of these that exist today?
So at least I've clarified my thoughts on it.
Okay. Yeah, and to me, I don't know what changes between now and, I mean, yes, we can, we can say we're granting the extension, and then we're going to have to come back to this and have staff come back to it. And if we want to add some of these other things that they've suggested as potential incentives. So I personally would rather see us just try to tackle that. But we even have till November to talk through that and just get it all done. As where we extend the deadline, and then four years from now, we look up and we're right back here, and we really have it. We've only changed the signs that fell down in Hurricane. There's only signs that would be different. So I'd rather see this maybe be a little more. All right. So, go ahead.
So are you looking for a motion then?
We don't need a motion. I'm trying to give staff direction to tell them what to bring back to us next. I heard, Brian, before we got at the very end, I heard a lot of folks that said they were open to the four-year extension. And I heard many of us also say with some of these provisions or incentives. So perhaps the commission's pleasure is bring it back as an extension with, you know, options A, B, C as potential things. We can choose to accept, you know, option A, B, C, or none of those, and just grant the extension and continue to debate option A, B, C, whatever those may look like. And we'll just defer to you and staff on, you know, from maybe most aggressive to least aggressive from kind of an incentive carrot-stick standpoint. And I'm sure some other, City of Ormond is one I'm familiar with that has a very similar process they've been going through. I mean, I was there in 2008 was when I was out in the hurricane, holding a sign up, or 2004, I guess it was. So there, you know, but they've been in it for quite some time, so I'm curious to see where they're at. So maybe you can look to some other cities and see what they've done, so. So staff will bring that back to us, and we'll have all those options on the table. And I didn't hear Commissioner Clody, three other folks, I think Brandy and Commissioner McGurk agree with me in trying to not open up the pole sign thing. So if you want to bring that back up at some other time, feel free. But, all right, that's item 7B. We good?
So we'll bring back, you'll see it again as an ordinance, and it'll have the four, presumably a four-year extension. We'll identify some conditions, we'll vet them, it'll go to Planning and Zoning Board and back to you with our recommendation. You could either accept those, modify those, or put that off for a separate ordinance at a later date.
So the ordinance is coming straight back to us, but the options are going to go through P and Z to us? Is that what you're saying?
Everything would go to P and Z, and everything would come to you, and you could, you could strike those conditions when it comes back to you.
Yeah, and I would be curious to hear P and Z's thoughts on the options. Obviously, they can make a recommendation, or they can just even just give comments and say pros and cons to each, or whatever they would choose. But be curious to hear their input. All right, that's item 7B. Item 8, second reading, sorry, go ahead.
I like your suggestions during the briefings about the incentives. I think it's a good idea to do that, to give them some incentives why they need to change. So maybe we'll look at that as well, maybe we'll kind of give it as an option.
I hope you remember what they were, because I don't. So somebody's taking notes, huh?
Well, I mean, one of the incentives would be the no permit.
But right now, there is no permits to begin with, but I think he mentioned that.
Right, but a year from now, there may be. So it may cost them additional monies if they wait too long. Well, we could extend that, we could extend that option two years out of the four years, and so...
Yeah, I mean, when you think about a $10,000 expense on a, you know, the AK food store there, I mean, I don't know if saving 300, 400 bucks on a permit's enough to make that worth it. And that's probably two or three months worth of profit, would be my guess, so.
And remember, we've got some people who have 50, 70,000 in the sign that they're going to have to trash and then pay 10,000 to get the money in the sign.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you. And maybe, maybe we just acknowledge that we're going to take this strictly by a, when the old one goes down, you know, that's when, that's when this kicks in. I mean, that may be where we land as a city, is to say this is going to happen organically over the next 20 years. I don't know.
And I will look into the CRA, if one of the grants that we have, if the sign is actually eligible under this program. I think that might be an incentive as well.
Yeah. Last thing I would say on this is, and there's 173 folks potentially impacted. I don't want to be sitting here having 173 folks pull up to the podium and say that they wish they had known because we passed an ordinance two meetings ago, and I'm sitting here trying to defend, well, we had public meetings. So if there's some way, if some staff member can, or we can hire an intern for $10 an hour to sit there and mail out 173 form letters and just let them know that we're talking about it, that would be fantastic.
We'll make sure of the...
Is the commission agreement on that, is that right?
Absolutely, and that's a big reason why it's a shock to people. We passed it, and then for the first five years, six years, there wasn't notification on it.
Yeah.
Staff did a great job in the last few years during the hurricanes to bring people up to speed on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, that's why, and this is not a criticism of staff, but I had asked Collet how many businesses may have complied to the new sign ordinance. It would have been good to have that to compare to. Even back then, in 2011, when it was considered, I'm sure people must have been sitting in the audience thinking this is an onerous ask with a big change. And, okay, maybe they decided to kick the ball down 10 years just to make everybody happy, ended up in our lap out of the sky, and now we have to deal with it. It's, and the business has to deal with it.
And they're not going to come singing our praises either time. I'd just rather, I'd rather involve on the front end than hear about it on the back end, so.
By the way, I asked Brian and staff about how many complied with this, and I don't think we have that information. And it doesn't look like that many have actually complied.
It's nonsense. I've been here, and it's hard to go back and look at a permit and know what their motivation was at the time. Was it, you know, repair? So it's very few is what our conclusion was.
And my anecdotal guess is that it's zero voluntarily. Nobody just walked out and said, you know, I need to comply with that ordinance today. Like, let me stroke a check. That just didn't happen. It was a hurricane knocked it down, and they were told they can't get a permit for the new one, and they swallowed it hard and did it. That's the only way that happened, almost guaranteed. All right, moving on, item 8. We have a second reading of public hearing for ordinances 26, 27, and 28-21, all dash 21. This is for annexing two and a half acres of land, address is 2555 Ernia Drive, I guess is how I'm pronouncing it. Ernia? Bob, how do you pronounce it?
I pronounce it Ernia.
Ernia, all right.
I don't know if that's correct.
Is that just, is that...
Good enough for us.
Yeah, right. Okay, so city attorney will read those ordinances a second time.
Ordinance number 2621, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach 2.5 plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Arena Drive, west of Cone Lake Drive, addressed as 2555 Arena Drive, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 4, providing for public hearing, provided for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 2721, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach, amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of 2.5 plus or minus acres of land located on the north side of Arena Drive, west of Cone Lake Drive, addressed as 2555 Arena Drive, from Volusia County Rural to City Rural, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, provided for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 2821, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach, rezoning 2.5 plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Arena Drive, west of Cone Lake Drive, addressed as 2555 Arena Drive, from Volusia County RA Rural Agriculture to City RA Rural Agriculture Zoning District, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, we'll first hear from the city. Bob, is this a routine annexation?
This is a routine annexation, and we are getting the comprehensive plan for the future land use and the zoning to be pretty much exact what they have in the county. So there's nothing special that we know of in this application, other than just being a routine annexation application.
Is this already developed land, or is it undeveloped? I can't remember.
I believe this is already developed. There's a house on this, or this lot.
A house on property, yeah, okay. All right, this is a public hearing, so does any member of the public wish to testify on this item, any of the three ordinances? This is your chance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Sorry, I was supposed to go with all this opinion testimony stuff, I guess, real quick. All right. We heard from the applicant, we heard that, we got the witnesses, personal knowledge, closing remarks. Okay, so all that's done. We'll now consider ordinance 26-21. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 26-21?
So moved.
Second.
City clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2721, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
City clerk.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And 2821, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Take vice mayor's second. City clerk.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to point out on that one, I think that I saw the name, and I believe that's a city employee, but just for clarity, fees are waived on that for anyone that applies voluntarily. So fees are waived, but had nothing to do with city employment. And we welcome them into the city and glad they're paying city taxes and not county taxes.
Stormwater, everything else.
All the other things. And they have a lower tax bill by being in the city. Still can't convince people of that. All right, item 9A, first reading.
Ordinance number 2521, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach, amending the city of New Smyrna Beach firefighter's retirement system, adopted pursuant to ordinance number 1161, as subsequently amended. Amending section one definitions, amending section six benefit amounts and eligibility, amending section 25 military service prior to employment, amending section 27 prior fire service, providing for a new section 28 defined contribution component, providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
All right, that was the first time. We're going to have a second reading of public hearing on that on June 22, 2021. So no other discussion on that tonight unless the commission has anything. Yes?
There, under the impact statement, under article number, item number five, it lists that there was a $237.75 was where the split was going to be. But yet, on page six, it references 278, 278. Just was curious as to why there was a difference in the state contributions.
I believe that that's just a typo and that we need to, I need to amend that.
Okay.
So I need to go through that. I'll have it amended for the second reading.
All right.
So we'll go through it.
Thanks.
And then also, he had a question about the impacts, the liability impact. So because you have taken care of it, that's why you haven't mentioned it.
So what was it originally then? Has it always been the 237?
The 237, I think it's 237037 without going back to my notes and looking exactly, I think is what it should be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll get those revisions made before the second reading, which will be conducted on June 22, 2021. Next item, boards and commissions. We have nothing for that tonight. Next item is mayor and commission reports. We'll begin with the vice mayor, as always. What do you have for us, Jake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, we had an accident where a pipe, water pipe was breached in the south end of Zone 1. We had to have a boil water order for several days. Hopefully, it was just a minor inconvenience for everyone. But I'd like to know, would it be possible to find out if, and I know I spoke to Collet, and hopefully, we can get a positive response from the UC, if they could somehow have a reverse lookup or some way to notify those who cannot and don't have the ability to get on Wi-Fi or the internet and find out information? to get on Wi-Fi or the internet and find out information that way. The UC and the city did a good job by notifying through their Facebook and the UC next door. But then there's probably little lady, and then there's even guys like me who, you know, just got into getting on their iPhone, their iDevice and didn't have a chance. So I, I know it's not the easiest task, but if we could identify, um, those people that could use that help, I would appreciate it. Something strange came up. It actually came up a few months ago. A neighbor who lives in the apartments on beachside, lives across from, uh, the mall where the Dollar Store and Mo's Liquors is. He had recently, uh, improved his lighting there. But of all lighting, it's LED. The modern lighting that is cost efficient, it's energy efficient, it sheds a great light until you look at it directly and it blinds you. It turns out that it sheds light, which is a nuisance. And consequently, we've had like four complaints already. I think at least three in my zone. So I've asked staff and I hope I get support, um, and, and a positive, um, thought from staff on how we can keep light from becoming a nuisance. It doesn't particularly, uh, inclu, well, it includes LED and it's not just LED light. Like if you, if you're in a residential district, should we have a light ordinance as far as light as a nuisance? It, it's happened once with a neighbor of mine. He was kind enough to move his light fixture and it didn't shine into my bedroom anymore. But we, we're getting more and more of that, especially in the mixed-use zones where there's residential next to commercial and a lot of light is shedding as a nuisance. I, it, it's my opinion that if you have to close your shades at night to go to sleep and there's still too much light pouring in, it may be a nuisance. Or if you wanna use your backyard and you go out and there's light shining from another area, maybe the use, uh, judicious use of a hood would, would be helpful. So if the city would be interested, I would like to see us create an ordinance for light as a nuisance, for whatever zone we can apply it. And one more thing, I, I think the state might be preempting us. I'm, I'm not sure, uh. Right?
Hard stop. They definitely are. Just what, what, which one today?
Which one today? It, it has to do with, you know, we have code enforcement and they do a great job. We have our legal department and they do a great job. And I'd like them always to be together in touch. It turns out, I think the state is going to preempt how people can complain to code enforcement about issues. You used to be able to be anonymous and it, it appears the state may have taken that right away from us, which makes it difficult for people to let code know there's, there's an issue with compliance. Sometimes just a nuisance, but sometimes a serious issue. And if the state's going to do that imminently, is there a legal way to get around them? Because it ends up, who's gonna complain? People have, have legitimate fear of complaining, uh, that they will be reprised against and I would not want that to happen. I would gladly complain for them, but then there's Vice Mayor Sacks with all his complaints and that's not a good answer, I don't believe, so.
I hadn't heard about, I hadn't heard about that one, but Khalid said, yeah.
Yeah.
So would it apply, we don't have to legislate this tonight, but I mean, it feels like one way around it would be if people called in. I mean, if people just called in and said, hey, you should check at the house at one-two-three Main Street and hung up, like how would we? We've got the complaint, we have no other information, like.
That, so this is, this is the language. A code inspector may not initiate enforcement proceedings for a potential violation of a duly enacted code or ordinance by way of an anonymous complaint. A person who, who reports a potential violation of a code or an ordinance must provide his or her name and address to the respective local government before an enforcement proceeding may occur. It does not apply if the code inspector has reason to believe that the violation presents an imminent threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, or imminent destruction of habitat or sensitive resources. So the other thing is if, if the code inspector is driving by and sees the same thing, then obviously that's independent, but.
So they, so the code enfor, so, I mean, is code enforcement obligated to like check an ID and validate the person? And if I, if somebody says, I'm John Doe, I mean, are we checking ID now on these things? Like, if the state wants to legislate this crap, then they need to legislate it.
I'm gonna be Russ Ellen.
That's what I'm saying. If, if the state wants to legislate this, then give us all the details. Tell us how this is gonna work so I can tell my code enforcement.
Right. So I just read to you all we have right now.
I know, that's, and that's my point. If the state wants to get down to the details with this and in the weeds, then they need to come hold a seminar for my code enforcement folks about how it's gonna work. It's so frustrating.
It's, it's, it's one of the things floating through. It's, I, I think we need to wait on it and see what happens. It's vague right now, but yes. It's, there's a lot of.
So can I do an anonymous complaint and code enforcement go by and evaluate it? And if they said, yes, there is a violation, how did, now I have to give them my name?
So I don't know how, you know, how on the backend they would prove this was based on anonymous complaint because if, if, depending on how you set up your code enforcement officers, if they each have like a particular area of the city and they do, you know, okay, I, I'm driving up and down the streets and I see it from my car, you know, just because it was anonymously called in doesn't mean they can't see it independently as well.
Well, listen, I think that it hasn't gone through yet. It's just one of many, um.
Approved.
Oh, did it get approved?
Yeah, it passed.
Yeah, we're past.
July one is the effective date.
My, my mistake. I didn't think it was.
And if you, if you pay attention, it says you do not, you cannot initiate.
Yeah, no, I know.
So what I'm saying is, yeah, you have to get all the information before you initiate the code.
All right. Go ahead. I'm gonna be quiet.
Me too.
All right, um, so Khalid and I will reach out to our beloved local legislators and figure out how we're supposed to do this. And if we're checking IDs and do we have to validate social security number? Like what, what info do we have to get to validate the identity of the person we're speaking with? Make it not an anonymous complaint.
Surprised the, the Florida League of Cities or the Volusia League of Cities did not catch this and they did not bring it.
Well, there was thirty-six, I believe, preemption bills that went through this time. So.
The League of Cities did say.
The, the League of Cities, they were probably all over it.
Pay attention to these things.
There were thirty-six, I'm sorry, there were thirty-six that got approved. There were, there were hundred, you heard the briefing, there were hundreds that didn't. So they, yeah, they were all over it, but it's like, at this point, you're, you're prioritizing. And we're not just having to pick our battles. We're literally having to prioritize.
Yeah.
And some, I guess this one just didn't go through, so. But I don't know, I mean, 'cause I get told by folks in Publix that by the time I get to my car, I don't remember the name, but I remember the issue. And so I'm calling Khalid and saying, hey, can we, you know, I just heard about XYZ over on, you know, Demick Street or wherever. So how does that work? I mean, this, this is fraught with.
Lots of problems and I, I, you know, you can tell people. I mean, I've got neighbors and people who want me to call code enforcement.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't deny, and I'll do that if there's a code, if there's a code enforcement issue there because they're scared, they're scared of retaliation.
Yeah, I agree.
Chief, chief, chief doesn't have enough police officers to deal with all the, uh, all the domestic issues between neighbors that are gonna happen with everyone calling on each other. So I, a lot of.
At this point, you assume it's a neighbor, you just don't know which one.
Right. So I joke when I say I'm gonna use the name Russ Ellen, but in reality, Jake, there's gonna be a lot of your constituents calling and reporting to you to report it in. And you'll have to give your name. And if that's the way it is, then that'll be the way it is.
Yeah.
You got an extra job title.
Chief complaint. Uh, what was, what was the first thing that you said? What were the other two? Just not repeat them, just the.
The contacting the UC.
Oh, it was the lighting. It was a.
Lighting as a nuisance.
The UC and the lighting. So on the lighting, I know we, when we approved like the Beacon apartment, not we, but when that commission approved the Beacon Apartments, um, that, yeah, that's the Beacon, right, yeah. So there was consideration for lighting. Is there anything on the books now, like as a residence, could I put up high beam LED shining straight in my neighbors?
Yes.
Is it, is that common or is it, or do most cities have some provision that limits something? Or is it just com, have we just never dealt with that? Cause we were a courteous society.
I'd say many cities have, excuse me, um, residential lighting ordinances. Many do not. Um, we have nothing on that, so we can fairly easily pull that together. I think the question to think about is it does introduce another code enforcement item that people can call and, you know,
Not anonymous.
Report and we would go out and we'd have to measure the lighting is the toughest part.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And, and when, when he's talking about a mixed use, here's the problem. You got a commercial establishment next to a residential. You have to have a certain amount of lighting over the property.
Yeah.
And then, so now what are we doing? Are we holding, you know, little lighting measures on, you know, the property? And then three feet over, now we, we're, we're too much light. So it starts to get very tedious, especially in mixed use.
My, my hope would be, it's hard sometimes to apply, to legislate common sense. But my hope would be we could have enough that if there was an egregious offense, someone literally set up an LED floodlight shining in someone's, you know, someone's window all night, we've got some provision to, that's clearly egregious. But I'm not out there measuring the lumens on, the, the floodlights on someone's house because it's like, well, that crosses my property line. So I don't know if there is some kind of a middle ground approach. I also have noticed that the, and it happens most in the liquor package stores, you know, these, these, you know, you drive by them, it's like literally your eyes hurt. I mean, it's, so I don't know if that's allowed or not, but it seems.
Well, I have a, I go brighter than what is recommended simply due to safety.
Yeah.
And, but I know it's funny, you say liquor, the North Causeway one out there. Yeah, that's great.
Literally hurts your eyes.
But on the.
And I get it for safety, but.
Yeah. So, you know, you get, Jake, this is a health, health safety issue. I'm surprised you want lower light. No, I'm teasing. Um, but yeah, I.
Again, I just, I feel like we should have, I don't wanna be completely unprotected on it. I'd love to have something where if we had to step in, we have some provisions because take all this to some extreme. Like what if somebody again put up, you know, huge LED lights and, you know, the, the lights that shoot up into the sky like they have at fireworks stores? It's like, at what point do you, we step in and say, wait a minute, this is not being a good neighbor, so.
Well, let's see if there is, uh, maybe a, an ordinance out there that we think it's reasonable and we'll bring it back.
Not, not by next meeting, just add it to the very long list.
Whenever we can, that's it.
And the, the, the last one on the notifications, I, I received similar emails. I, I wish I had a magic answer to that. How do we, you know, cause the, same thing, like, you know, and that's not, I know that's UC, but we have similar times when we're trying to notify everyone. We rely heavily on social media, but I mean, my parents aren't on social, they don't have Facebook, they don't have social media. They, they rely on good old snail mail, you know, so how do you, how do we get urgent alerts out to our community? I don't, I don't know if there's a solution, but I do think we have to keep working at that.
My assumption that they, that they should have like a reverse nine-one-one call. I called Joe today, but he was out of the office, so I will get back with him tomorrow. Uh, there is a couple of issues I'm gonna talk to him about, but I think they have a, a reverse nine-one-one. Now, if they put some wider area, they will use that.
Yeah, the question is.
Smaller area, they put the door hangers or they put the flyers. But I'll definitely check with him and I'll get back.
And we have to have some threshold of, everything doesn't warrant a reverse nine-one-one call. The sign issue doesn't, you know, we're not reverse nine-one-one for that. Boil water notice, perhaps it should. Because again, my parents would've never heard about that if they had been in the affected area. Because they're not, well, Mama, I think one of them is on Nextdoor, so maybe she would've seen it, but she probably doesn't check it daily, so.
No, what I heard was that there was no water in the bathrooms on the beach. So none of the toilets were working, so that's, it was like hours later that I actually heard there was a water line break.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
So gentlemen, if, if you'd just let me finish my statements. Um, Memorial Day was this year especially poignant and memorable, hence Memorial Day. And I'm, I'm reminded again, this is for those who died in the service of their country. It was an honor to stand amongst those who stood with them as they may have died. It was an honor to be with them as they prayed for their fallen, for our fallen, um, in, in all the wars. In fact, I know someone who passed away of Agent Orange. I always think of him. But, uh, thanks to the city for bringing that. I'm glad COVID just swept away and everybody was there. You could see the, the bottom half of their faces and it was nice to see a few smiles. And gee, thank you to your men and you, if you were standing at a corner doing this, because we needed the help on these past few, you know, over the holiday and the other weekend. It's gonna be a busy, a busy summer, so I hope our residents are well taken care of and that they don't have problems. This is just a plug, a way for me to push my fire traffic light. If we can get them on the road faster, our citizens will be safer. So I know you're working on that, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we'll come to you next, Mr. McGurk.
Just wanna echo Memorial Day ceremony. Um, that and Veterans Day is probably, uh, makes me the most proudest to serve in the capacity that I do because it is because of those who gave, who have served in that capacity that allowed me to serve in this capacity. So it is, uh, very, very meaningful and emotional for me to attend both of those ceremonies each year. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with Memorial Day. I mean, it, it's, it's always a moving event. A year ago, it was kinda, we had the issue with COVID, but this year it was certainly a, a pleasure to see all of those people out again and to truly remember those who, who served. The other thing I have is, um, I've been approached about the traffic on Fairway. Several residences feel that there's a speeding issue and what going on. Um, this just recently came to light, um, so.
Assuming Fairway Drive.
Fairway Drive, yeah. So, um, where are we on the traffic manual? And then, and then if I could get up to speed on, on what's been done there for Fairway Drive, you know?
Do you ever do that now or do you wanna hear from them later?
I'll hear them from later.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can maybe speak to the traffic manual and then you can bring up speed on the rest later.
June twenty-second agenda.
For the traffic.
The manual coming back.
All right. Anything else?
No, it was a thanks.
All right.
And by the way, we did the study on the, speed study on the Fairway.
Okay.
So we'll, that will be attached to, to your, uh, traffic manual.
Okay, Commissioner Clody.
There's a number of items I just want to bring up. A lot have to do with the budgets we've, uh, we've had in the past. And we make, uh, good points during those budgets. We appropriate money. And sometimes we really don't follow through because of our workloads or other priorities. I have a couple I wanna list. We, two years ago, or perhaps one year ago, we appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work on, uh, parking problems in the North Beach area. We were to work with the county. We were to explore the possibility of a, uh, a really good notification sign on forty-four west of ninety-five. I know staff has done some work on it, but I would like to see something come before us on what to do with that. I've had some suggestions, uh, myself. Uh, I know the issues are not being ignored by our staff. Second thing is we also appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for small drainage projects. Uh, there's a couple areas in the North Beach area. I know staff has worked on a few. They've solved one or two. But really, we, we gotta improve the communication between the staff and us so we can relate to our constituents what's going on. I get calls on a random basis, maybe after a big storm or after something else happens in the neighborhood. Commissioner, you said we're gonna do something and we haven't. And we haven't made people aware of what we're, what we've appropriated and where we stand on those projects. Another one, which was a very hot issue, was loading zones. We were gonna revisit the loading zones. As far as anybody knows, we haven't revisited them yet. I know that we've recently installed an additional one on Cooper and we're working to install another one on Buenos Aires. But really, we gotta sit down, we gotta talk about these things and we, we gotta move them forward. We've all agreed that these are good ideas, but we don't have a good idea as to where they stand now. The LDR parking study is coming before us. I'm glad to hear that. I know it's scheduled. I know on the homeless issue, we haven't really hit a roadblock. We've kinda just hit a snag. And I would like to see us proceed with that. I know staff is doing. I know staff is doing that. I would like to see the issue now focused on how we can deal with the homeless who intrude upon private properties. And the police really don't have a way to deal with that. They're precluded from it. We have plenty of homeless issues, how we can help them, how we can feed them. We spend money now for that. But I would like to see us concentrate more on the aspect where they are, the homeless. And it's not, it's only a small percentage of them are belligerent and they approach people on their front porch or while they're walking through parks. I would like to see us move ahead with that. Uh, and the next subject, during our last meeting, we had a very nice discussion on how we were no longer going to fund the wall project and whether it was necessary. And now we find out that these states wants to give us $80,000 to work on that project. Uh, I've asked Hallid to, uh, try to define whether some of that money could be, uh, used for, we've talked about security fence near the top of it and some other minor improvements, whether we can go forward with with parts of that. The last thing I have is I can't wait to have another zone meeting now that the COVID has left us. So these are all issues that are, a good part of them are centered in my zone area. And I I would like to really have us up to date as to where these various things stand. I know we've put some programs in to track where we are in capital projects. I myself have not followed up on it, which I'm going to. I would like to see that we are using those programs. Uh, it's it's not meant to be a criticism of staff. There's so much to do. And sometimes the communication parts, they're working away on things and we don't, we don't even know unless I happen to ask. So that's basically it. I I think the communication between staff and us has to be better. And then it's our responsibility to get it out to the public. So those are my comments.
Okay.
I ask individually frequently and I get good answers, but other people don't know.
Yeah, those are good comments. God, I'll talk to you after about some ideas that from my past life of reports we gave to the board that they found pretty helpful. We had a similar comment one time and we made some tweets that we'll talk about. Is that it, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I had a couple of things added to the list while he was talking. Um, so State of the City, speaking of zone meetings, my my zone meeting, I guess, is State of the City, which is now by Charter. Um, I'm thinking of doing that and we had talked months ago during COVID and I think we had all agreed we wanted to try to delay that to when we could have an event somewhere the last time. I'm thinking, uh, due to, you know, personal travel and schedule and everything else, uh, late August, which is an awkward time for State of the City, we're very obviously out of cycle. Um, but that's what I'm thinking. I'll have to work with staff on some dates, but does anyone have any immediate concerns with that from a conflict standpoint? I would definitely want you all to be able to be there and then obviously would, is there any other major things that would be bumping into?
League of, you got, you got the League of Cities Conference, but that's more early mid.
Okay, yeah.
But if you push it back late August, first week of September kind of thing, that's probably a pretty good spot before the holidays and after, after the summer.
That's what I'm thinking, trying to, trying to get, you know, I know we have a lot of residents that aren't here over the summer, so trying to push it a little bit later. Although this time the plan is we can even stream it or stop you to record it. Um, so anyway, we'll get some dates and circulate some. Okay, so we'll get some dates and circulate some dates with staff. And if y'all have any conflicts, you know, please note them because we, again, definitely want you to hit here. Um, and then like last time, we'll work with staff to to coordinate that event as needed. The, uh, the homeless issue that you brought up, I I agree with you. I've talked to staff about, and we talked about it at length at the last meeting. You know, how do, what tools do we need? Is it staffing? Is it ordinance changes? Is it access to a shelter? What boxes do we need to check, um, to be able to become more aggressive, I'll say, with this, um, the, the, the more vagrant side or the nuisance side of of our homeless? And I don't mean the nuisance meaning someone that's suffering and needs our help. That's not what I'm referring to as nuisance. I'm referring more to the folks that are wandering down Flagler at 1:00 AM or wandering through the park, harassing families and telling them, you know, you know, get the blank out of, out of my, out of my park type stuff. Like, how do we, you know, how do we address that? And I think we all kind of have that issue, so I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but we have to come up with some strategy and plan or else that's going to continue to get away from us. And and what I need to know is what do you need, what do you need from me? What is needed from me? Is it, is it funding? Is it an ordinance? Is, you know, what is it that's needed from us to get more aggressive on that? Or is it genuinely, there's nothing we can do? And if that's the case, then I need to hear those words too, so.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we individually meet with staff?
Okay.
During our agenda briefings or at any time to give staff an idea of where each one of us is at. And then let staff try to find some common ground, um, or then bring back a discussion for us to have where they're seeing either stalemate or maybe some direction. I think that's the best way to go forward with that right now. And I have no problem with meeting with chief and meeting with.
All right, good idea.
With city manager.
We'll meet and I've shared some of this, but yeah, we'll, we'll meet. Uh, the second one or third one kind of related to that, um, I guess, a couple of days ago, maybe, I don't remember when. Um, we had an issue with, uh, someone, a boater had an injury and, um, someone reached out to me with a comment and they said, hey, we're, you know, trying to render assistance on this dock. They literally couldn't get up to the dock because they had dinghies and boats that were chained to the dock, not just moored, you know, not just roped off, but literally chained to the dock. So this resident saying as they were trying to render aid and they said, you know, hey, what what is the city doing about it? I know this has been brought up and I believe Commissioner Cody's brought this up numerous times, but are we doing everything? Didn't we reduce the time limit and were we going to try to ramp up enforcement on this dock back here of trying to keep it from being someone's just literally there all day with their boat chained to the dock?
We reduced it to, if you remember, to five hours. So and we have the signs up for five hours.
Okay.
So.
And is staff kind of helping us monitor that?
Yeah, if they see it, I know that at the last city commission meeting, uh, the chief actually called one of the officers and they were out here to enforce exactly what he just said.
Okay, I mean, I don't, I don't see any out there right this minute, at least that I can see somewhere maybe below the thing, so. I I I just think that's something we got to continue to work on. Maybe, you know, if we need to go lower than five, I don't know the magic of five hours, maybe we need to go lower than than five hours. I mean, I don't know what the purpose, the intended usage was. So I just want to make sure we're trying to get the intended use, which is not someone that, you know, lives on a boat and then docks there all day. Yeah, I don't, it wouldn't be my intended use, I guess, so.
At the time when they did that, uh, many of the minutes was the, from the DEP and defined. It was the idea that they want to be able to dock their boats, go downtown, have dinner, shopping and come back and go. I mean, that was the, the, the ideal.
So that's a two or three hour excursion.
So, I mean, if you, uh, if the commission wishes to reduce it from five hours to five minutes, we we could do that.
All right. That was it, that was my last thought. So we we have reduced it, I can respond to that resident, we've reduced it, we're monitoring it, we are doing enforcement action when we catch it. Also acknowledging though, again, it's hard to legislate courtesy and common sense are the two hardest things to legislate. So there's literally nothing stopping the person from pulling out, driving around for a minute and coming back. That resets the clock, right? Just like if you're in a parking spot, you leave it, you come back, resets the clock.
I think we even made it cumulative if I'm not mistaken.
Cumulative, it is.
It is cumulative over a twenty four hour period?
Twenty four hour period.
Yeah, but how do you, how do you truly manage that? I mean, it's like, that's, how do you prove that? If you, if you were challenged on that?
Put chalk on the tire, no tire.
You can't do that anymore.
I know.
Chalk on the tires illegal now.
I know.
Okay, what's that?
Put up a camera.
That, yeah, we have cameras at this facility.
We do have cameras.
Because someone accused me of something and then they pulled the footage and it didn't agree. They posted the accusation, they never bothered to post the footage they wanted, they got though.
Of course.
Yeah, it's fascinating. Post the accusation, make a big deal, pull the footage, no, it doesn't support your narrative, yeah, let's just ignore that, let's just forget that. All right, we digress, city manager report.
All right, uh, I just want to go few, couple of items that are not on the city manager report, but, uh, I've talked to you during the, uh, the briefings to all of you about, uh, the lettering on the city hall annex building. I just need to get a consensus from the commission so we could, uh, move forward. So the options are the following. One option is to keep it as is, don't do anything. The second option is to make the changes on the lettering to, uh, we have a, uh, someone that we could actually make the letters and make it city of NSB. The third option is to keep what's, uh, First Baptist Church and then have a monument, uh, uh, you know, on the ground there. It kind of explains about the project and about the building and 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 what they use today. And the fourth option is to cover it with some type of covering. The option of changing the letters on the building, it's about $7,000. If we put the plaque on the ground explaining about the history, that's between thirty five hundred to $4,000. If we do the covering, it's about $1,500 and if we don't do anything, it's zero. So without, so I don't want to spend too much time, but I just need a consensus so this way I could give Michelle.
Michelle, come down there, I'm going to start with you and come this way, go ahead.
Do nothing.
Okay.
I would like to cover it up, but not damage it for historical purposes. I'd like to cover it up with a sign that simply says something like New Smyrna Beach. But I think it creates some, has the potential to create some issue to have it advertised as a Baptist church.
So cover, so not change the, not the $7,000 option to change what's there and make it in the same style? You're saying cover it with a new.
I want it always there and it'll be something that will be there and assessable, make covering a sign that covers it, but doesn't damage it.
Stays what it is and put the other on in front of it somehow.
And some kind of historical narrative on the building is a great thing too. Not necessarily have anything to do with my recommendation.
So that sign would be hidden but exist.
Hidden, exist and not.
With a new sign and then also the plaque is on it.
That's, cover it, but the plaque is something that I am for.
All right. Uh, okay, so I have one for that and I have one that made up this whole new option. We're going to call it the Jason option. All right, Vice Mayor.
I'm not opposed to the plaque, but I don't necessarily, it needs to be done now. Probably could be done through the historic society, that maybe they could come up with something and and maybe get some funding or or grants or something going forward that we identify that.
So that's one, so that's, so that's one for as is or or as is with the plaque.
Right.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm thinking a bit outside the box, but somewhat within your parameters. I don't know where we're going to get a why, because we're going to use existing letters, if that was a thought.
That was one of the options, yeah.
One of the options. I don't mind if it stays there, but it may be, um, people might object. But if you use those letters to create city of NSB and provide a history with a, a will, something that you can preserve, almost like a monument that shows the original front with First Baptist Church and show its history, that would be nice. So just an option to throw it out there or leave it alone. I can't see covering it up, but I mean, that just didn't deny, denies our history, so. If we can be creative and use those letters, that sounded interesting. And also provide the history with, uh, I'm sure you can engrave a photo of what the original building looked like. Yes, it'll cost money, but hopefully it'll be the finally the the few dollars we'd spend on it.
So I think what I heard the Vice Mayor say is change the city and do the monument or some version thereof. So, all right, let's see where Commissioner Cody is.
Historic building, it was a church, should stay as is. I have absolutely no objection to a plaque, not a giant plaque, to identify the fact that it was a church. And that's it. Now, a third option.
No, it's like it's a seventeenth option at this point.
The third option is we should put a pole sign out there with, up at the top says formerly, just before the words up there, that say church.
A pole sign.
How about a monument sign on the other side, so to comply with?
Yeah, one that says church, we have moved, how about that?
Okay, so.
Leave it as is.
As is, what about as is with the monument?
Uh, that's acceptable also and I am not worried about people complaining in the future because I'm sick and tired of people complaining about everything.
You're in the wrong job, buddy. Okay, I happen to agree with the as is with monument. If it becomes, if if we're landing on national news, if it, if we, if it becomes an issue, if it's offensive to someone, not someone, but enough people and they've, and they stated some logical case as to why it is offensive, um, as the history of the building, we can always go back to any of these other options. It doesn't preclude any of those, the covering, etc., but rather than borrow controversy. And it's interesting because when Kyle brought this to me, I said, asked him his professional opinion, like, what do you think professionally? And then I said, just personally, as someone who's not of the Christian faith, does it offend you to, I mean, he's a resident. Does this offend you to have this on a city building and does it bother you as someone that, you know, is of this faith? And 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 his answer was no, it didn't, didn't bother him at all. It's a historical building, that's what the building was, it's not what it is now, has no connections to that now. Um, so that's how I tend to see it and how I think the vast majority of the public would see it, even those who are agnostic in faith or have no faith or whatever. Um, I mean, frankly, we do an invocation before every meeting, that's, that's, that's more than than sign over the door of an old, of an old building. So, um, so I say leave it as is, put the monument there so it's very clear it is city hall now and this is why it is there. Um, you know, that's why that says what it is, that it's city hall now, but this is why we saved it, it's part of our history. Um, and then if it becomes such huge, some huge controversy, we can always come back to that after we heard from the public.
And I'm good with that, I I got no problem.
All right, so sounds like, yes.
Just a quickie, uh, we were going to designate the, uh, Honorable Jim Hathaway chamber, is that right?
Yes.
Where will we designate or give him a plaque?
That would be inside the, as soon as you walk into the, to, you know, the hallway or the foyer, before you get into the commission chamber, that's, that's where the plaque will be.
And to the, uh, First Baptist Church, I, has anybody consulted the historic society at all regarding it? What they, what their thoughts are? Because I'm flexible, frankly.
We have, I have not, uh, I don't know if the staff, I think we approached him early on, but not about the specific, the lettering on the thing.
Yeah, all right, yeah, I think we, I think we had the majority, I would, just start going.
So, but are you in agreement that the plaque part can maybe be funded later or done after the?
It's, it's $4,000 roughly, that's a huge project, it's like a, it's a rounding error on.
I mean, there are other things that were planned for that complex that won't get done or hasn't been done because of budget issues, so.
You know, we could wait on the, on the plaque until we figure it out if you want to, I mean, I have.
I mean, historic society may have a, a quick input and.
If they've got, if they've got funds or we can raise some funds, but I'd like to see it done upfront.
I agree, but just, the historic society, I don't think is what.
Now, if they could, yeah, I don't think so either. Now, I I would like their input to help us, the narrative, like if there's history on, that we need to put on the plaque, like that's where I would say, say try to help them.
Okay.
Um, and if they have a grant or something that they can apply to this, great, but I wouldn't want to wait. And I say just get it done, but that's just me, we can, if if the project doesn't have the budget, then it doesn't have the budget, but I, let's just get it done.
Okay.
A related question.
Okay.
In front of the new building, the one we're going to use, we have a monument sign, what are we going to put on that? I hope we're not going to put the word annex on it.
That's a, that's a great question, actually.
There is a monument sign right in the front that will say development services. There is a monument sign right in the front that will say Development Services on it, right? Development Services? You're talking about the one by the road?
Yeah.
Yes.
By Sam's?
It would say either Development Services or Planning, Engineering, and Building.
Okay. I just don't want to see the word annex on it.
Do we need it? Don't want it to say the word annex.
No annex.
I agree. We should probably drop that from the back of. Does it, does it need to say anything about the commission chambers or no?
I think it does, Mayor, but I'll double check on it, but I think it does.
I don't know that it does. That was a question.
I think it does. I'm saying I think it does, so, because I think we have a, kind of like a directional sign, I think.
I did suggest to Michelle on one of our tours that we should have signage closer to the doors that very clearly indicated, you know, or else you're going to have a lot of people walking in the building department on the days of commission meetings and vice versa, so some clear signage closer to the, just little rocks or something, anyway. Go ahead, still your time.
Other topic is the homelessness center. I mentioned to all of you during the briefing that I will not bring back the homeless at the 22nd meeting. I want to bring it back probably in September. I want to look at some other options. I want to reach out to First Step and use that as a temporary action. I know that when we approach the First Step, they indicated that they'll charge about $2 a person based on the population. So you're looking at about $58,000. I think one of the issues that we had is the transporting of the homeless to the sites. Talked to the chief a couple of weeks ago. I think that issue probably we could maybe overcome because it doesn't have to be a police officer. So we have to look into some other means of transportation to the center. And then I will be reaching out to them probably at the end of this week or early next week just to see if the safe zone is still available there, because I guess when they open up, our concern was there is not enough capacity and there is no, you know, first come, first serve. So if they have the safe zone, I think it would make the issue maybe a lot easier for us. So there will not be a report on the homelessness center at the 22nd meeting. I have put a lot of hours on the previous one, so I just need to pull back and look at maybe a temporary action for now.
Okay. Colin, one quick question for you, going back to item 6G, the flood-prone homes. We didn't talk tonight. I assume that we talked about later, the options that they will have as far as paying upfront or assessment. No, you and I talked about in the briefing. Is that going to come back to us, or do we need to talk about?
Yeah, it's coming back because there's a couple of things that we have to do. One is there will be a letter going out to the residents for the nine homes and the rest of the four and the 17, asking about, because at the public meeting, we have asked them if they are willing to pay upfront. And at the time, the nine residents that they were there, and even the four, they were willing to pay it upfront, but I don't have that official. So there is the financial aspect of it, and also as well as having the residents in agreement. We had a conference call with our financial advisor yesterday because we received the official agreement from FEMA on the nine homes. That will be on the 22nd meeting for the commission to consider and approve. And also, we have to look at the assessment part of it or the paying and how we are securing our reimbursement from there. That will be coming back to you.
I just had to reply to that reporter tonight, so. All right, city, who's up? City clerk's report. Hang on, who's got to turn you up there?
That was me, sorry.
Oh.
A friendly reminder that the Financial Disclosure Form 1s are due on July 1st. If you serve on one or more boards, you can include all of those boards on the same form. And if you need help or want us to email it for you, we can do that, too. We're happy to.
We usually get those mailed out to us from the supervisor.
I got, I got one from the supervisor.
Yes, that's correct.
I haven't gotten mine.
I sent an email, too. I'll resend it to you.
Yeah.
I got mine, I turned it in.
Of course you did.
I'm done.
Yeah. No, she emailed it to us, but I got mine in the mail, yeah.
Quick question.
Yes.
Kelly, can we mail it directly to the supervisor?
Yes, you can.
Yeah. Good to have you back. That's what I was going to say.
Thank you.
Glad to have you back. Sharon did a fantastic job in your absence.
Yes.
You gave her the meeting where we had 300 people here, so.
That's what she told me.
Well played. City attorney's report.
No report.
All right, gentlemen, meeting adjourned.